Councilmember Colomer?
Here.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Here.
Councilmember Baker is absent. Mayor Moore?
Here. This time, I'd like to ask everybody in attendance to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in honor of our troops. Thank you. The following items that have been placed on the consent agenda are considered routine in nature will be passed with one vote of the council. Should any member of the council or the audience wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration, please say so now and it will be removed and considered following the approval of remaining consent items. Consent items include minutes from the council meeting on August 11, 2025, payroll for the pay period ending August 9th in the amount of $246,115.27, staff reports, BAC report, community unit school district number 230 fireworks, community school district number 230 homecoming parade, Sernos Hog Days Alley closure, and Step Ladder Tag Days. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Councilmember Colomer?
Do I have to abstain again, or do we need to?
You can be approving all of the other ones.
It's consent agenda.
All right, great.
Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Next, we have approval of the bills for August 25th in the amount of $305,225.75. Do you have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
So moved. Second.
And any discussion?
Go ahead, great.
Okay. I just had a couple of things. I had a few people reach out to me because there was a lot more Amazon charges than normal, and they just wanted to make sure we were cognizant of that, and I know we've talked about that before. But I wanted to mention that. But the one thing that kind of stood out was a shovel for 160 bucks. What was the shovel for? I'm not questioning, I'm just curious more than, I guess, anything, a $160 shovel. Were we breaking ground and we needed a gold-plated?
Courtney has an answer for us.
That was a that was a public works charge, so I'm not entirely sure what it was for, but that should have said shovels because there was four of them.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, that's
Better. Yeah, it was not just one shovel.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Adam?
Just the Hutchinson charges, so we're we have an agreement with them and we have multiple different agreements with them. Can we have more clarity on these Hutchinson lines and Hutchinson lines moving forward? Like, I don't know if we've applied contract numbers or scope of work numbers, but something that says this charge is for the downtown project, this charge is for Boss Street, this charge is for Elm, and whatever else moving forward. That way, we can really take a look at the deliverables that they have and do some value engineering, like you and I've talked about, you know, making sure that we're getting appropriate product for ours billed. All right, thanks.
It is very confusing.
And I did just receive word that the shovels were for both the water division and specific ones for coal patching.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to public comments. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council regarding anything not on the agenda, please step up to the microphone, state your name, and please keep in mind there is a three-minute time limit per speaker, and speak loudly so that the people listening at home are able to hear what you have to say. We have no public comments, so we are going to move right along to new business. Starting with item A, the proclamation is the 2025 Constitution Week, so I will read a proclamation honoring Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States by America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Gary Moore, Mayor for the City of Kewaunee, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. And we ask our residents to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through their guardian of our liberties. A witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kewaunee to be affixed this 25th day of August, 2025. Item B, Bill Number 25-67, An Ordnance Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement by and between the City of Kewaunee and Robert A. Johnson and Johnson's Appliance. This bill will bring an agreement between the City of Kewaunee and Johnson's Appliance located at 114 North Chestnut Street in Kewaunee. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
And discussion? I'm not gonna lie, it's weird for me to read Robert. I'm not used to anybody ever calling him Robert. All through school is either Bob or Hot Dog.
Couple of things that I was wondering about is I don't see a quote from anybody, it's just an estimate. And then, secondarily, Gary, the forgiveness is only tied to a straight-line amortization across five years rather than tied to any tax increment, which is very inconsistent with the last TIF agreement that we approved. So why is it written differently?
Okay. So as far as the estimate, I believe that the work has, for the most part, been completed in that there are invoices or would-be invoices available to pay. This is different from the other ones, or from the last set, because it was submitted at a time where you were still approving TIFs on it for roofs and for things without it necessarily being tied to the EAV that's generated. And that is totally on me and on staff because Mr. Johnson had submitted it in time to have been heard and considered at that. But at that point, I was trying to manage the agenda and get some things off of our plate. And the night that you guys said, "We're not doing any more roofs," I was like, um. So that's why. That's why it's different.
That's why it's different.
That's why it's different than the one that was approved last week.
Because to be clear, this will most likely result in no additional assessed valuation.
It most likely will not result in assessed value. But at the time, we were discussing, we had also considered tax increment financing projects that merely preserved what we have because a lot of places have a declining EAV, and it's important first and foremost to protect what you have before you worry about expanding out and growing what you have. If you're not taking care of the buildings that you have, that's a bad thing. And that's true whether it's a public-private partnership or not, that private property owners who don't maintain their properties ultimately has a bad result for the city.
We are not here to say that Johnson's Appliance is not taking care of their building.
No, we're not. But this is an opportunity to help a small business, which is part of what providing incentives is for. But it does raise the question, which is a question you guys have asked, is how much do you help them? How much, you know, how do you split that as far as them having skin in the game, so to speak? You know, all valid questions.
I guess I'll just point out again, you know, we have also approved a small business loan in the last, you know, few months for another business owner. I think that there are other opportunities to help small businesses. The intended purpose of TIF, in my mind, is to remove blight and to help secure and diversify the tax base so that at the end of the 23-year period, we have a more secure and a more diverse and a more robust tax base than we would have otherwise had had it not been for that investment, and the sacrifices that the overlapping taxing districts are making during this 23-year period. So I'm just not, it's just my opinion, it's a valid, or it's a worthwhile effort. It's just the wrong tool.
I agree with you, Adam. I mean, we said after the last roof, we are going to direct them in the right place to be able to get the funding that they need. And it may not be this, it may be something else the city offers. The small business helps things like that. I think we need to do a better job of funding that, putting it out there, and directing people that want to replace a roof, you know, that aren't going to generate anything. We're going to, you know, 25 grand, and we're not going to get anything put back in there for it. And that 25 grand is now gone, and we're relying on others to help refund that money.
Did I understand you correctly, Gary? You said when you received this, it was prior to us making that decision as far as?
That is correct.
Now, that's, I'm not going to say that I don't disagree with you guys, but I think that's something to consider too, that this was submitted prior to us making that decision.
And prior to making that decision, less than much. So while I agree, moving forward, I also believe in this case, Mr. Johnson did everything
He did, and he
Most of two at that time.
I agree with that. Is there any other ones out there that we don't know of?
There are no other applications out there that So it's the last, last, last.
The last, yeah.
Anyway, that's just my thought, I mean
No, I mean, that's the way I think
It's not, it's not his fault.
Before we set a precedent of no more roofs.
Comments, opinions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Congratulations. Item C, Bill Number 25-77, Ordinance Amending Section 97.088. Walk built or replaced by private individuals established in the City of Kewaunee Code of Ordinances. This bill will increase the reimbursement amounts of the city sidewalk replacement program. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And any discussion? Yeah, I didn't see anything that was change theirs. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
And Item D, Bill Number 25-78, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with Solar On Earth for Participation in a Community Solar Program. This is a resolution that will save this city 20% on electric bills. The agreement with Solar On Earth has the potential to save the city approximately $2 million over the life of this agreement. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
And discussion? You have several representatives from Solar On Earth here, so if you have any questions, now is the time to ask.
Do you mind kind of going through the program again and how it's going to benefit? For viewers that may not have caught the last council meeting, and how we're community sharing your solar, and what that's going to look like?
Absolutely, thank you, Chris. There we go. Thank you to the City of Kewaunee for having us out here again. I know
And just let people know who you are again, too.
Oh, Nathan McCrathie from Solar On Earth out of Carroll County, Chadwick, Illinois. And we're working with a number of different municipalities, cities, school districts, villages throughout Illinois and the rest of the country. We are currently working with Kewaunee School District. I do know that the city has two different districts. It's the high school with Rebecca Bany, we already have on the program, Galesburg School District, Village of Morton, Princeville, other school districts that are in the area. And we're building a special group of community solar projects with Microsoft Computer Corporation, where we're offering certain cities, villages, towns, larger companies, a 20% discount off of all dollar credits that we apply on to an electric bill, typically for cities that have really good financials or have a bond rating. I believe that the city actually had an older bond, and that's how we were able to get the city approved. I'm not sure if it's actually still in effect. But we did use some sort of old information to be able to get the city approved. The prior proposal that we did make for the city was going to save the city anywhere from $900 to $1.2 million over the course of 20 years, and that was starting at $45,000 a year. I've updated the proposal since then. Year one, the city would actually save a little over $80,000 year one, so it's actually a little bit more than double since the last time I came by. We did meet with, there's a gentleman named Kevin Yespin, who is an awesome contact that I was able to talk to through the mayor, who owns a bank nearby. We had an awesome conversation. We presented the agreement to Kevin. Kevin did go through the agreement and did tell the mayor that he thinks this would be a good thing off of the city. So I had an awesome meeting with Kevin that was actually a great contact. I really like meeting really smart people, and Kevin's definitely one of them. So as Chris mentioned, just to give a little bit of context on where the city's at right now for electric spend, between the streetlights and all the electric bills, the Kewaunee's right around $750,000 a year for electricity. And to be quite frank, based off of all the cities and villages that we work with right now, with what Kewaunee's population is, it's pretty high. I would say it's probably on a scale from 1 to 10, 10 being the highest with what the population is. I'd say like right around 9.5. So it is significant electric spend for what, based off of population. So I think, you know, any money that could be saved off of what I would consider to be a pretty high bill based off of per population would be found money for the city. So, you know, we'll just kind of give like a basic overview. If you have an electric bill, and it's about $10,000 a month, the electric bill would come in from Ameren and the third-party constellation that the city works with right now. On the second page of the electric bill, there would be a new line item that was never there. It would say community solar credit, negative $8,000. That $8,000 would get deducted off of the total due. And about 60 to 90 days later, we would be billing the city 20% less these credits that we put on the bill. So it's not going to create like an accounting nightmare for the city. Each bill is going to get a credit that says community solar credit, it's clear as day. That's going to get deducted off of the Ameren and Constellation bill, and our bill is going to be exactly 80% of that credit that the city got 60 to 90 days later. And the reason why we're kind of billing that far out is it actually takes us about two months to get the data from Ameren to know what we're going to be able to build the city for. So by the time we're kind of billing Kewaunee, we're at about 90 days after the city already got the bill. I think that's actually one of the better parts of the program, that this is not a program where the city is paying something first and then receiving something after. The city's actually receiving a benefit first, and then we're billing the city 90 days after the fact for that credit. And for the viewers that are not here tonight, pretty much the second-best deal for community solar in this part of the state, or even all the way down to Robinson, which is where Parker's from, is about 11% discount. So we're pretty much able to get Kewaunee what is considered almost double of what like the standard offer would be for municipalities. So there's a number of municipalities that already signed on that got a 10% discount. I know that Washington got a 10% discount. I know that Ottawa got a 10% discount. The City of Pekin did get an 11% discount through us. I'm not going to share why. Like I said, you have to meet certain requirements in order to and then the other thing that was also attractive to finance is we've already got the school district on. So that we've already, you know, we did the same thing for the City of LaSalle, where we got the city on, and then we got all the schools on. So, you know, finance goes, oh, great, we have multiple entities in the same area that we're doing business with. We've done that quite a bit. We also did that with the City of Marion, Marion School District, almost down by Kentucky, and then a number of other areas. So this would be found money. One thing I did want to add is there's probably going to be a second wave of this program coming out at some point where we're going to be offering community solar back out to residents rather than just for the city. And the cities that we're going to be doing that for are cities that we've already signed on for all their personal electric bills for the city, like the water treatment plant, all the municipal bills where we can go to the city. Because I think the city right now has, most likely has an aggregate program for the town, or maybe there is no aggregate. Is there a current aggregate right now with the third-party supplier? With, oh, there's not, okay. There's some towns that are, I haven't, you know, we've never gone into the supply end of the business, even though we could have, because we deal with a lot of electric bills. We were just a little worried if someone's not really saving money on energy supply, it will maybe not make the community solar side look good. But we're actually going to be able to roll out community solar on the city level where we could come back to the city and say, hey, the state has allowed us to roll this out as an aggregate program for the city. So a letter would go out to pretty much all the residents if they want to get this automated credit. When that comes out, the state's trying to make it a little bit easier. So like with the city, we're going to be putting credits on the bill. We're going to be billing the city 90 days later for the credits. The state's trying to make it easier to do this as an aggregate program where they just get the credit directly on the bill, there's no second bill. The discount won't be 20%, it will probably be somewhere between 5 and 10%. But typically, you know, a city like this, I don't know how many houses there are, but, you know, the savings would be about maybe $300 a house. So if you took the 300 times how many houses, that's how much the residents would save. And this would also be eligible for anybody who already has solar on their roof. Just if anybody didn't know in the audience or listening over the computer, the city is going to be putting solar on the water treatment plant. This community solar program is not going to interfere with that. Believe it or not, there's certain states that don't allow you to do both community solar and put solar on your property because utilities say they don't make enough money, just kidding, to figure out how to put multiple line items on one bill. And in Illinois, you can do pretty much whatever you want. So the city's going to be able to maximize their savings. They're going to be saving money off of the water treatment plant, and then they're going to be saving 20% off of credits that we're putting on the city's electric bill. So that will, at a minimum, save the city $80,000 a year. And by the way, the city is doing a really good job. Probably, the City of Kewaunee has some of the best electric rates that I've seen in the state with the third-party that they currently use. So the city is pretty much spending as little as possible on the current electric. So it's a lot on electric for the population, but one of the lowest rates I've seen in the state. So this will just add to all the current savings that the city's doing. It's found money. There's no money out of pocket for the city, so it's not actually costing any of the ratepayers any additional money. There's no loan. So I'm just trying to bring every, it's a state program, if anybody wants to look it up. The program is run by Illinois Shines. Illinois Shines is the governing body of the community solar program in Illinois, who's governed by Illinois Power Agency. So if you go ahead and look at old legislation, the program's been around for about 11 years in other states. The program was designed to provide access to everybody to be able to participate in clean renewable energy. And I'm sure anyone who's listening has realized their electric bills this summer were the highest that they've ever seen in the entire time of having electric bill. Ameren did have a 2,000% rate increase.
So how many megawatts of excess credits does your company own?
Um, 500 million, somewhere around there.
Not anywhere close to it.
Oh, no, no.
So is the business model, if I understand it correctly, you own solar fields. You're selling the power to Ameren or ComEd or whoever the third-party providers are. We're seeing a credit back on our bill for those, and then we're going to pay you for 80% of the credit.
Yes, but let me add a little bit more into a context in there. So the state said to the utilities, instead of these projects just getting built and 100% of the proceeds of these projects going back right to the utility, we want you to take part of the money and be able to give this out to the community. And the way that we're doing it is through this billing mechanism on the electric bill. So unfortunately, people won't just get checks. They do have to get a credit on their bill. You know, we're billing them 90 days later at 80 cents on the dollar. That's correct, Adam, yep.
Right, all right, so we're getting rebates, all right.
Yeah, I mean, and the program's not really, I mean, it's funded through the utility, but it's really funded through people who pay an electric bill. You know, because, and the reason why the program's not in like Corn Bell or Mid-American, most of the states that have this program right now, the program opens up initially in what's called investor-owned utilities, pretty much the big guys, Commonwealth Edison, Ameren, National Grid, New York State Electric Gas, Central Main Power, Main Public District, stuff like that. And, you know, they have requirements from the state called a renewable portfolio standard. So they say to the So they say to these utilities, you guys have such and such dates to produce a certain amount of power by renewable energy. And if you don't, we're going to fine you. But what's actually really going on behind the scenes? Sure, people are going to get these credits and whatnot, is the grid is very old. And the grid is also going through a major update right now that's, uh, pretty much required. Uh, we are about to build a bunch of projects in New Mexico and everybody was shocked. That a hundred percent of all the substations that we're going to be interconnecting into all require an upgrade. That's not a very good sign that the grid is where it needs to be at. And that's actually where we're at in Illinois. I'm just kind of shooting from the hip, but I think at least eighty percent of the substations that we're interconnecting. With these solar projects are requiring an upgrade. And those are all being paid by the solar companies. Ameren says it costs you nine hundred grand. There's no argument. That's what the cost is. Um, it has, it has to get done.
Does the rebate come out to about ten percent of your bill? I tried to do the rough math there.
So, um.
You, you said that we're paying about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which is about sixty five thousand dollars a month. And then you averaged about eight thousand in rebates. Is there a calculation that?
Sure. Um, so I did, I, I did a lot of talking with the energy consultant for the city. There's a couple of rules. So you have a couple meters that are what, what's called on like a DS three B and over where you cannot consolidate. Um, the supply back onto the utility without canceling constellation and going back. To fully being on Ameren, then you would be on an hourly rate, which would not work out. So there's a number of your bills that will only get the credits on the delivery part of it.
Should you could step back just a little bit?
Yeah, I should know better. Uh, there's a number of your bills that we cannot cover the whole. Um, uh, the whole bill because you're on a certain rate class with Ameren. Just turn the mic off. You're loud enough. They can hear you.
Yeah, I got a pretty, pretty loud voice. So, um, there's certain meters that the city's on that, uh, don't. Wouldn't really make sense to cancel out of and put back with Ameren. So if you, there's one of your bills that I think is the water treatment plant. That's a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars a year. And most likely about forty percent of that is delivery. So there's like sixty percent of that we can't cover, but the city is also getting solar on that bill. So we kind of downsized and we're a little bit conservative. So I think, you know, we, um, you know, I think initially we were going to put about two. Two hundred and forty two thousand dollars worth of, uh, credits on the bill. I'm assuming we're going to end up putting, uh, right around five hundred thousand dollars worth of credits on the bill. Uh, billing the city eighty percent on, on the dollar for those credits. While the city's actually spending. Um, a total of six hundred and eighty two thousand dollars a year. But that's all part of this bill, cause we look at twelve months of the usage, was based off of before rates went super crazy. And there's going to be a, uh, like you have a really good rate right now. But, um, there's going to be a time where a lot of these rates actually go off. I don't know when your contract is up with your supplier. So. We're also trying to be conservative and not over credit your bill. Like if your bill's six hundred and eighty two thousand dollars a year. There would be no point to put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of credits on your bill. And then create, um, like an abundance of credits that would keep rolling over, that you're not saving any money on. So typically we downsize it to be a little bit conservative. I think I could probably squeeze out a little bit more than eighty thousand a year of savings. I'm just trying to be a little conservative so we don't over credit the bill. We could always adjust it as, at, at any given time and lower the amount of credits. I also want, but this would be kind of the last shot that the city would be able to get twenty percent. So I'm trying to make sure that the city is able to maximize the twenty percent discount. Yeah, that, that's right, Adam. The, you know, if you look at your whole bill, that's almost seven hundred grand. The property that's on Fisher Avenue, I'm assuming that's the water treatment plant, is spending a hundred and eighty two thousand. And that's a DS three B rate class. And what happens is if you try to consult, there's a bunch of rigamaroo with Ameren and the suppliers and tariffs and laws and. All this other stuff. And we learned a lot about what you can consolidate or not. It wouldn't be very advantageous. For us to consolidate constellation, get rid of constellation and then pick up Ameren. As the supply company and now the city's paying on an hourly rate class. Which would probably cost the city even more just to pick up an additional twenty percent off of the leftover. So.
No, I appreciate it. I think what I'm also kind of going towards here is that, um, I'm trying to understand. Uh, how to forecast the budgetary impact. We're, we're going to talk about budget here in a couple of, uh, bills down the way here. And our budget is already like max complexity.
Yeah.
And so when we're talking about what we're going to spend on power, what we're going to get in rebates, what we're going to push back out and rebating the rebate. Uh, I didn't really see it in the contract and I was wondering what the algorithm is.
Well, there's a pretty big chance that you could save eighty thousand bucks with community solar. And Ameren raises your rates pretty high, which only ends up, you know, that they could increase your bill by forty thousand. But our credits are also going to increase into, so if we start you off with five hundred thousand dollars worth of credits. To save the city a hundred thousand dollars a year. And rates go up and the total bill goes from six eighty five to seven eighty. Our five hundred thousand dollars is going to increase into proportion to whatever rates go up and then your savings would increase. Not that that would be a good thing, that the city's bills go up, but our savings would increase based off of whatever rates go up.
Proportion to the rate increase.
It's a little bit tough, Adam, you know, like I have a McDonald's indicator. Uh, their bill just went up seventy thousand dollars a year and he's going to save fifty thousand with community solar. So I said. You're really, you know, your, your, your bill kind of only really went up twenty thousand. They said, you sound like my wife. So I mean, the.
No, I, no, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
It's tough because.
Wait, is the savings tied to kilowatt hour or a megawatt day? Or what are we tying it to?
It's actually, um, direct, you don't see it on your bill, but it's directly tied to what the current value of supply, transmission and capacity charges are with Ameren. So if that goes up, our dollar credits are going to go up, but you still get a twenty percent discount off of that. So the discount never changes.
No, I like the discount. Where is the rate of rebate calculated?
That gets inputted on your disclosure form. It's at ten cents right now, but it changes like almost every three months. So like if, I think like three months ago. The value of the kilowatt hour for community solar was seven cents. And then rates went up and then it went to ten cents. So they might an- a- announce a decrease for the winter, which is what they most likely do. And it might go down to eight and a half cents. And then those dollars would decrease and then you get a twenty percent off of that.
So we have a variable rate rebate and.
Yep.
A twenty percent discount. And, and, and this, and a set twenty percent discount.
Yeah.
And what is the period of fixed rebate rates? Is it, is it, is it set? You said three months, every three months, quarterly?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's based off of whenever Ameren gets approval to change their rates. Um, I don't know if they just got a six month approval or if they just got a three month approval.
Okay.
So I, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but it's, it's pretty much usually Illinois is having a, a six month. A six month, um, change. It should go down for the winter. Usually what's happening with electric. The, let's say it's a winter time, it's the rates are X, it goes up for the summer. And then they kind of drop the winter rate down a little bit higher than what the previous winter was. And then it goes back up the next summer and they kind of go, and that's how electric rates are going up. Um, but you know, there, there are some things, you got a really good supply rate. Um, however, Ameren at any time, even though you have a locked in supply rate. Can do these pass through charges. So they can all of a sudden say, hey, we need a bunch of extra electricity whenever and that. And that's why the city spent significantly more on electric this summer than they did last summer. Because, um, the passenger charges went up a ton, uh, this summer compared to last summer. Everybody's talking about it, you know?
James, do you have any, uh, concerns at all about how you're going to budget moving forward if we were to enter this agreement?
Yeah, I do have concerns about the allocation. Um, but I would have to see how the credits play out and how we allocate it.
Just, but just the allocation, not necessarily.
I haven't, no, I haven't, Bill Vincent, yeah, at this point.
Adam, one thing I wanted to add is we have an awesome client service team. That once the city is getting credits on the bill, Tanya Quest from our team would come to the city. And go through all the bills of what the accounting team and make sure the team understands, okay, this is how the credits are getting applied. This is just to do like a, you know, cause the city has about thirty different electric bills. So that's something that we do with businesses and cities all the time. We'll come by, they'll go through it. So there's no confusion of. You know, how we're saving money, but it's pretty straightforward. Cause we're going to put X amount of dollar credits on the bill every month. And our bill is going to be exactly twenty percent less the credits that you got directly on your bill. So there's no games of. We're not sure if we're saving money or not, you know? If we put a ten thousand dollar credit on the bill, our bill's going to be eight grand.
Yeah.
It, I can understand the budget, the budget part. What I can say is year one. We would be putting about five hundred thousand dollars worth of credits on the bill over the course of a year. So year one savings, I'm thinking about a hundred thousand. I told you eighty, cause I want to be a little bit conservative, but I think I should be able to squeeze. We started off about forty five, but I think the numbers I came up with will be close to about a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars year one. And what I would say, uh, for the last eleven years that I've been doing this, year one, a hundred percent of the time has been the least amount of savings. So.
So Nathan, you said one thing earlier that would the credits get applied, was it sixty days, ninety days?
So the credit.
The credit gets applied, but the bill is how long?
Well, ninety days after.
Ninety days?
Yeah.
So then how would we apply that to the appropriate month?
I mean, it would be.
So if we got June's bill in September or August.
When it cashes, so when we pay, we apply. So if there's a gap.
There will be.
Yeah, we just don't, if there's ever a back end, which is at the end and then the, then there will be this retro. Not, not retro, but there'd be this bill after, that's all.
That would go, I mean, it would be billed this fiscal, but could potentially.
Well, it's still a separate one. Yeah, I had one. But if allocation is, as you explained, that simple, then it should be a simple process. It's just understanding whether or not we feel comfortable with the credits as a whole.
How to apply them to the different departments and.
Well, that part's easy. Boy Courtney does it right now. It's fairly straightforward. Uh, so if this is consistent with that and we can verify that, then it's easy.
Last question is that? Do you have any issues with the contract that you looked over?
Yeah, the only question that I have for you, Nathan. So you've mentioned there are some of the power that we're receiving that wouldn't really qualify for this. But yet we are subscribing to a certain amount of capacity by the way of this agreement. So. How much wiggle room is there with what you're setting us up for versus that threshold? Cause I'm trying to get my head around how much of our power is not going to qualify? So what, what portion of that of the bigger picture does this fit into? Does that make sense?
Yeah, about two hundred thousand dollars. And that's because, um, the water treatment plant is going to be getting solar. And then also streetlights that don't qualify for the community solar program. That's a state rule. So it depends. Some cities, I mean, I've had cities that are bills for their water treatment plant and all their buildings are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And then they have three hundred and thirty grand worth of streetlight bills that don't qualify. And I'm fighting with the state right now to try to get those approved. Kiwanis has a good amount, so if that does change, and we can, uh, I should the mic off, so. Um, if we, if we do get that changed, um, with the state, then that's additional savings that we'd be able to come back. To the city and say, hey, the city has approved us to be able to do this, uh, for the streetlights and we could add those onto the program too. They're just not allowing those right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Apart from that, I have no other concerns.
Nate, did you have any questions?
No.
So the, I'm just curious, um.
You could turn the mic back on. You're not as loud as Nate.
Um, if the city did its, it wasn't clear in the packet, did the city do its due diligence and seek out proposals from other companies on this?
It did receive other proposals. They were not as much.
Okay. Is that, is that published anywhere or?
Um.
Was it done as a part, part of a RFP or RFQ or something along that?
Yeah, we had already entertained, we'd already been, um, approached by other providers. Um, so I, we have not gone through, uh, an RFP, uh, process for this.
Okay. I just, I think the department, um, I think something should be considered.
Thanks, Rick.
We can, if that's something that the council would like to do, uh, but we have.
Is there other market research to do? Is there other providers providing similar things? I mean, uh, Mayor Moore, you spoke to Mr. Eppson about this. I mean, would. Or expertise should we see out?
Kevin, when I spoke to Kevin, he did not indicate that we need to speak to anybody else, but he, he reviewed it. He had, uh, at least one meeting, I think a couple of meetings with you, didn't he, Nate? And he told me that this was actually a very good. Good deal for the city. And then, uh, the idea came up that it would possibly interfere with our contract with, uh, Clean Energy Design Group. Uh, I talked to Nate. He indicated that in Illinois, we're allowed to have both. I confirmed that with Kevin, so it's not going to interfere there. But, uh, according to what the information that Kevin, Kevin gave me, that this is actually a very good deal. Probably be the highest that we would get. That any other companies would probably at best be able to match.
He answered all my questions while he was talking. I'm good. Call rule.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Koenick.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time, Nate. Item E, Bill number two, five dash seven nine, resolution fixing the budget for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty five and ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. Every year by law, we are required to set a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This resolution is a product of a lot of hours of research, cuts and number crunching. I encourage anyone listening to look at the meeting's packet and review the budget. Do I have a motion?
Go move. Second.
And discussion.
I had a lot of people approach me that were confused about the term fixing the budget, like we had broke something.
Establishing.
Yeah, yeah. That, and that's how I relayed it, that it was not, uh, it was not broke yet.
So, so I mean, the, the concern obviously here is, uh, expenses are far greater than revenues. Um. Gary, can you tell us again what, so we can make sure that we are controlling this, watching this and making sure, uh, that we don't run into issues? What is the dollar amount that staff can approve without bringing it to, uh, the council for review and approval?
Typically twenty five thousand or less. Uh, and to the extent that this is over. Uh, and the expenditures outweigh the, the revenues. That is done with existing fund balances where we've built up money, uh, over, uh, a few years. And spending that or grant revenues that have already come in, but the expenditure hasn't happened yet. Or a few instances like in, in some of the economic development areas. We budget everything that's there just in case, uh, companies, uh, want assistance, whether it's through revolving loan or something else. Actual expenditures that are expected for next year do not exceed revenues.
I think that's, uh, from concern of the citizens that we're way over. No, in the, uh, red for the budget and it's like, how can we be that far over? So having them understand that some of those funds are there. Ie motor fuel tax, like we're spending one point one million and we have five hundred and ninety seven thousand in revenues, but there was additional funds in there.
Call rule.
Councilmember Koenick.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Mayor Moore. Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Next, Bill number two, five dash eight zero, resolution to appropriate Kiwanee non-home rule sales tax matching funds for an Illinois Department of Transportation, safe routes to school project. Section twenty-two dash zero zero dash one one dash zero zero dash S W, commonly known as the Lake Street Safe Routes to School Project, and authorizing agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for said project. This resolution appropriates the city's match for the sidewalk project on Lake Street. The state wants to make sure the city's funds are in place before they let the project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So Gary, just what's the, can you go over again the scope of this project or what we're getting out of this? Uh, we have discussed some efforts to extend it. But what, what, where, where's the extent of the sidewalk?
This, this would put a sidewalk on the north side of Lake Street, uh, going from Bell Alexander to, um, the apartment complex, uh, that's down there. And we've, we've sought other safe routes to school grants to go from there all the way down to, uh, the housing authority properties. Uh, this road on, it's a sidewalk project, but the state has treated it more like a street project because in order to put the sidewalk there, you have to put curb and gutter on at least that side of the street. So this, uh, is a little bit bigger than you would normally see for just a sidewalk because it requires, uh, some retaining walls on one side and some curb and gutter on the other side in order to be able to put a sidewalk through on that north side, um, within that very narrow, uh, driveway that goes through there.
So with curb and gutter, are we doing anything with the streets in, in that area?
Yeah, the, the street has to get redone as part of it. So that's, but it's.
And it is included in this cost?
It is.
Good.
What is the total, uh, scope of the project cost?
Um. It's, it's our part and I want to say.
We're appropriating a hundred and eighteen thousand for it.
And I think they were three fifty.
Three hundred fifty thousand?
When will this be let?
Uh, this will be let in November and completed in the spring. This is one that they were here a couple of months ago, talked about and said they wanted to push it back so that it could coincide with the downtown improvements. They thought we might get better bids.
Hardly believe pushing something back could possibly save on the bidding, but that is the case.
This is a much needed project.
It is a much needed project. There was a pedestrian fatality there a few years ago, and that's a very dangerous area. And typically the kids that go to school there are among the youngest in our district, in, in that district, I should say.
Other questions, comments? Call the rule.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Item G, Bill number two, five dash eight one, resolution declares certain equipment excess and no longer required in the operations of the city of Kiwanee and directing the city manager disposal saying, the city upgrades or replaces equipment as our needs require. This resolution will authorize the city manager to dispose of equipment no longer needed for day-to-day operations. Items being disposed of are listed in our current council packet. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have a dollar value for these?
Uh, that might not, I don't, do we want to do that? Because there's, there's going to be possibly a bid process.
Or we're, okay. So these are not being disposed?
No, no, no.
No. Um, and some of them are very old and have just been sitting collecting dust. Um, but we do use a website where we can put equipment like this and chances are, like the two larger printers might be sold for parts, somebody that still has that equipment. So it would be really hard to put a dollar amount on it now because we will probably put it out for bid and see if anybody could use them. But there are items that don't get used anymore.
Other questions, comments? Please call the rule.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Item H, Bill number two, five dash eight two, resolution toward demolition work at three forty-fifth Avenue to the lowest responsible bidder. The city is continuing its efforts to remove dilapidated buildings that have become a blight to some neighborhoods. This resolution will authorize the demolition of such a building at three forty-fifth Avenue. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Question.
One thing I can say, there was quite a disparity between the lowest bidder and the next two.
That I was going to say, that's quite a difference.
The next two were out of town. One was north and one was south.
One of them was from, uh, near St. Louis and the other one was up, I think, in the Chicago area.
So are we going to, with this property, is somebody looking to buy it so that we have to backfill? Use green dirt or what's your thoughts on this? Because I know we go with the two bids.
Yep.
Uh, and we take which one, uh, do we need to backfill it or can we just?
So actually what I want to add there is this thing is in tax deed with trustee and will likely be at auction in November. So with all probability, whatever we spend on this is gone.
Yeah.
I'd recommend that lower, lower of the lowest bidder.
Yeah.
You know, the traditional fill it would do.
Yep.
I really would, so.
Okay.
Uh, it, it, it's a, it's a, you know, three tenths of an acre. It, it is a decent lot.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, I was, I was considering recommending not doing this and waiting until after the tax sale or the auction in November. I mean, is there, is there a clear present problem that we need to take action now? Or could this nine thousand dollars be used towards another property that you're working on? Um, I just, you know, we've been discussing things like being able to recoup liens and this has a high likelihood of being something that's going to need to be forgiven or lost in a tax sale.
I mean, I, I think it's a good use. I mean, that building's been basically abandoned for as long as I can remember. Um, I was told by, I believe it was a girlfriend of the owner who is now deceased, um, that it's just, it's just being left. No one, no one's, you know, taking care of it. Um, we've had to mow it and there's always been some form of debris dumped in the back. The owner's not around, so someone around there dumping stuff there. Um, so it's just kind of a nuisance property, uh, as far as that's concerned as well. We've been working in that neighborhood. Over the last few years, we've taken down, uh, three, um, abandoned properties on Columbus Street right on the corner. We just took care of the one down the road at five hundred fifth Avenue, um, take care of this one and that neighborhood just slowly. And then a block over on Helmer, we took one down and that, that whole neighborhood just slowly starting to look a lot better, um, over the last few years.
I acknowledge.
I actually did.
You're doing a lot of good work on that street.
Yeah, yeah, I actually did push pause on this one for a while. Zach had gotten me that order quite a while back. But then some other properties I felt were higher priority. Um, so I took care of those with the rest of that grant money I had. But then I got the extra thirty-eight thousand in reallocation. I'm like, okay, we can press the button on this one now. Um, there's two other ones that I'm working on, but one's in an insurance, uh, deal and in that case, it was a, it was an arson case. And, uh, the owners now decided they're going to fix that property. So I'm pressing pause on that one. Then we got another one where the, it's actually, um, occupied, but should be condemned. But the owner is going to supply us with the contract at the next court date, showing that he's going to have a contractor to, to fix it. So I'm pressing pause on that one as well.
So you got the additional thirty-eight thousand. How much of that have we spent so far on? Is, or is that?
If this one's approved, um, I'll have, uh, sixteen and change left. So roughly two to three, depending on the, you know, size and how full the building is.
Have you been inside this building?
I have not been inside that building.
I'm just wondering, like, I know we have this grant that we can demolish some of these buildings, uh, but there are other communities that, uh, let out bids to renovate homes that have been abandoned rather than, uh, tear them down. And this one has a metal roof. It's got new windows. I mean, I admit it's, it, I mean, the front is not looking good and it's abandoned. But otherwise it, it just appeared like it had some salvageable elements.
Some good bones?
Well, I don't know about bones.
Yeah, I don't.
Had a roof and windows. I don't know.
We don't own it, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the permission to renovate it.
I'm not saying that we do. I'm just saying, you know, sometimes when your only tool is a hammer, you're always using a hammer. Um, and so it's just, I, I, I want us to think about these things and particularly when we know we're going to lose this money in November when this thing is sold at, at the tax auction against, you know, what other things could be done with it.
Right. And I understand where you're getting at, but also keep in mind that it, that is grant money that we've gotten from IDA.
Whatever, whatever money we have, I don't like, I don't like spending, you know, I want to spend.
When is this auction? When is the auction on this?
November.
But we don't have a guarantee that this one will be.
I have not seen a property that has a structure on it not sell.
I'm thinking wait until the sell and if the owner wants to take it down, let him take it down. That'd be their responsibility. If it's going to be in just a matter of a few months, go public auction, then why are we going to tear it down and lose the money on it?
Well, in some of these cases as well, I understand where you're getting at. But then some, some buyers will come in, uh, and, and buy up these properties and then they sit. And I end up back square one and Zach and I end up having to bring them back in the courtroom again. You know, and we're, we're right back where we started from. So this has been my experience over the ten years I've been doing building and zoning.
The other thing that I'm going to point out on that real quick is when that gets auctioned, the trustee is going to make clear that it is subject to a demolition order on this as well. So they're going to know that that's potentially out there as a specter when they're selling this thing. So that might influence whether it ultimately sells or not at that point anyway. And then it'll just end up put back out on auction again if it doesn't sell the first time. It's historically what tends to happen with that. And they'll make multiple attempts at trying to get it to sell if it doesn't move right away.
You're saying we could just be prolonging the inevitable?
Potentially, yes.
Gamble either way. Who are we willing to gamble?
Are there, I mean, obviously there's other properties, but is there anything that this eight, nine thousand dollars could go to immediate that may not be allocated towards this? Is there anything pressing? I know you put pause on a couple.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of pressing pause here. I have to use up this grant money by November of next year. Um, knowing that the court process does take some time. Uh, we actually did have, uh, one person come in today and sign a consent for demolition on another property, which should be a fairly, um, inexpensive demolition um, when we get around to doing that one. Um, but these other two, they're kind of in limbo in the court right now. I'm, I'm kind of holding off on any further action until I see what happens in the next thirty to sixty days on those cases because.
Well, that's, that's definitely another angle. If this is use or lose and you don't have enough work to make sure we don't lose it to expiration.
Yeah.
That is.
Yeah, because if you're going to have to start the process over again, then we're, we've lost that money that'd be allocated towards this. You may not, I mean, we may not end up using all the money as it states because we can't get to the courts.
Right.
I think you're talking through, yeah.
I will also add, you know, when, when this reallocation thing became a possibility months ago, um, you know, I had given IDA, you know, an exact number of what I thought I could use before the expiration date. And this one was in it when I figured that number.
Well, then if we're leaning in that direction for, you know, another four thousand dollars, we could have a buildable lot. I don't know. It, because it is a third of an acre. I mean, it's.
So like if it, it, it's a big enough lot that if, if a neighbor did decide to buy that lot, they would still be able to build a, say, a garage or a yard shed. There's plenty of area without being over the top of where this building is at currently.
Right. That's true.
And the other building that we took down, down the road, um, in the five hundred block, uh, we chose not to go with the, the other fill just because of. I totally get where you're coming from. I understand.
I'm in favor of taking it down for that eighty-nine hundred, eighty-nine forty-nine.
Call the rule.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. We need to pick a company and a bid amount.
Oh.
So.
Danny Gay.
Danny Gay.
Eighty-nine forty-nine.
Okay.
So everybody's got to say that before we vote.
Uh, I just, it's blank in here, so as long as you're all in cons, okay.
I'm okay with that. That's what I would say, yeah.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
That brings us to discussion items. Uh, first item is a discussion on, uh, one percent retailer's occupation taxes. This discussion item will deal with the non-home rule one percent retailer's occupation tax, which state laws, we are allowed to incorporate into our tax base. Councilman Cernovich ran across information where this non-home rule allows municipalities to apply up to one percent of local sales tax without going to referendum. If, you know, all you recall, we attempted to raise that a year, year and a half ago by referendum. And now with this new state law, we are not required to do that by referendum. We already have a half cent, so we still have the flexibility of adding a half cent. I personally would be in favor of in, increasing that half cent with the stipulation that it would go one, one of two ways either strictly for streets and sidewalks with a sunset. And when we get all the streets and sidewalks caught up, that that sales tax would go away. Or we include, um, sewer and stormwater and such, and that the, um, resolution is written up in such a way that it can only be used for those purposes. And the only way it would ever be able to change by any future councils is by resolution.
You, if you use the sunset on when everything's caught up, that's a moving target. Because it's, it's very subjective. Is it all caught up, you know, from today's day?
My, my way I'd like to see is, uh, I know we talked about this prior to everybody on here. I think I'm the only one. We had a, um, literally when I started my first night, we had, um, who's our old engineer?
It was probably Dale at that time.
Dale, it was Dale at that time. He came up and presented a one percent. We would, uh, sunset it after ten years and we would, uh, get bonds, I believe is what we were going to do. Those are than a couple of years, use that over the ten-year sunset to be able to pay off the, the bonds that we get for it.
I see.
And that's what we should be doing. We should not be trying to play catch up. We should raise the funds that we need today against the one, the half cent. Get everything caught up in a couple of years and then we're maintaining after that. And that's where the moving target doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, and that was my first concern. Isn't it?
And that's what I'd like to see.
What's the value of a half a cent again?
Well, we're thinking two hundred sixty million in sales for Kiwanee roughly. Uh, so, you know, two hundred sixty million at ten percent, twenty-six million, one percent, two points, two point six, half of that.
Not everything's taxable under that.
Okay, so it's just the retail portion. I'm trying to think somebody, so the maximum, I need to do the math under it in my head.
Put a ten-year sunset on it is what we did with that.
So two hundred sixty million.
If you look at what we generate in a regular year on the half cent of the.
If you look at what we generate in a regular year on the half cent of the non-home rule sales tax and just double it, that'll give you the number.
Non-home rule right now is thirty-one. About thirty-one. So doubling non-home.
Which is, what is non-home rule?
Non-home rule right now is, um, you were, that's hard to answer.
Just what's the value of non-home rule?
Right now, non-home rule is thirty-one to forty-five one. Right now, we have budgeted for uh Fund Thirty-One, sales type, what we use, which is non-home rule, we here for the font, about eight hundred thousand, so we will double that. We have a budget of eight hundred and sixty thousand this year.
That would be in addition to um that we receive from the state. So, I mean, it's, it's out there.
So I think, I think it's important to kind of articulate the utilities of these two different funding streams as well. Motor fuel tax, again, can only be used with expensive engineering. And so like fifteen to twenty percent of everything that we get in motor fuel tax has to be used for non-recurring engineering. So it's approved by IDOT. You know, something more closer to ninety percent of a local fu- uh, a local non-home rule sales tax could be applied towards road uh repair because we can contract with local companies to do our uh non-primary roads um in a more expedient fashion. And actually show our residents, you know, more immediate value for this tall order that we would be asking of them.
Dale had presented us a map of the city and uh I'm not even gonna try and guess or try and say what. We're gonna do some overlay, some, or whatever we're gonna do, but he had presented that and this would be kind of the phases over the two years that we would get and do for that, and they would, residents would see an immediate, my road is fixed, you know, within that couple of years.
There's also a company out of the Saint Louis area. Does a, a slush seal that they are claiming has a, a twenty-year life expectancy. It goes on red and dries, looks just, just like asphalt. And right now, we could bring them in to do work in Kiwanis if we wanted to, but they're not recognized by IDOT. So we would not be allowed to use motor fuel tax if we brought that company in. Uh, this stuff goes on almost as, as a complete liquid. It fills in all the low areas and is self-leveling. And so then when it dries, it, it's more durable than actual asphalt itself. And if we, this, this is a company that would be an option for us if we uh chose to, you know, apply this tax.
What's the cost? Is it cheaper than some of the work that we would do with traditional methods?
And that I, I mean, I think Gary might have a little more experience with that than I do.
It was at, at the, when we first looked at it, it was about a tenth of the cost. Um, now it's somewhere around a seventh to an eighth of the cost of a hot mixed asphalt.
So considerably cheaper.
And the state of Illinois did do a, a pilot with it. Rockford area last year.
It, you mentioned that. Did you ever hear any results of that?
I should track back and see if we can go up there and even take a look at it.
I, yeah, I'd, that'd be a great idea if, you know, we could schedule a time where as many of us as possible go up and look. Um, I know you've, you have some experience where you've worked before, correct?
I, I used it in Missouri and Kansas, um, and the roads in both places are still like they were when it was used.
Where is, is pretty significant, um, you know, on the good side. Was that just, you know, an option that wouldn't be available to us that is currently not available to us under motor fuel tax?
When can we expect again the uh road plan, the road assessment from Hutchinson?
Um, that, I would suggest that that's probably um after the deadline for this for sure, um, closer to the end of the year.
Well, uh, I mean, when you say a deadline for this.
The deadline for this, as far as if you wanted the collections to start January first, uh, it's gotta be done in October. If you wanted it to start in the summer, then those, you would have to adopt something in the spring.
Yeah, so there's a timeline element. Um, I, it, it's just my opinion that if I were, you know, it, if I were unable to vote for this and we were going to vote on behalf of our residents, we owe it to them to tie this to a plan of action.
Yes.
And not something notional. So that's, you know, where I'm coming at with that question.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, um, that that's a, a preferred alternative is to be able to say what you're going to do with the money, when you're going to do it.
Do it immediately.
I, uh, I think if we reached out to Hutchinson and, and explained the situation, they might ex, you know, consider expediting that program for us. And I think they're proven that they're, you know, pretty flexible and easy to work with. Another thing I like is, you know, this would not just fall on the shoulders of Kiwanis residents, it would anybody, anybody shopping in Kiwanis that is having to get the wear and tear of our infrastructure.
Surrounding people who live in surrounding communities that come in to our community to shop.
And it would be small enough that most people aren't even gonna notice that the increase.
When's the deadline for January? You said October?
I believe it's October.
And if we don't get it in October and we pass it beyond that, when will we be able to start collecting?
I believe July.
April first for collection to begin July first. After April first, but before October first for collections to begin January first. It's on that front page.
Thanks.
I glossed over it, there's very little words there. It's right here, in case you guys were wondering on the front page.
Not, not everybody at home has it right in front of them. What's the, what's the timeline for our bonding process?
Um, if you had an approved source of revenue already, um, and you got bond counsel involved, probably sixty days or less.
Okay.
Put together a bond issuance. It would depend on if we wanted to go through a rating process like Nathan was talking about earlier. If we wanted to do that, you're probably gonna add forty-five days.
Under my thought. What direction would you, gentlemen, like to go? What, what information would you be comfortable?
Gotta kinda see what Hutchinson can do in that timeframe first. I mean, you know, to have a plan.
Go to them and.
Yep.
Even if it's phase one, we, we, we owe it to the residents to tell them what's gonna happen and go do it.
I think it goes through the transparency thing that everybody says, so if we have that phase one something, that this is where we're gonna start, this is what we're gonna do, this is our plan, and this is how we're gonna allocate these uh revenues. I think people will be able to see that and know that within this timeframe, this is what will be done. Or it'll be a little bit easier to swallow.
Hutchinson, before we.
Hut- Hutchinson and the bonding, I, I really think that this is a smart strategy that.
How, how soon can we get that information?
I, I will try to have information for you for the next council meeting because you don't have any other, if I don't get you information for the next council meeting, it would have to be the one after that for you to act on it, and it's. We'll have to move quickly.
Is that doable? Is that even?
Yeah.
Worth a try. So we'll move on to our, if everybody's satisfied, we'll move on to our second discussion item. It's uh republic sector use of uh TIF. Our, our second discussion item is related to the public sector of, of the uses of TIFs, so.
Uh, you have a, a letter and a TIF application uh in your council packets, and those are different than what we're used to dealing with, so. I'll pick up.
So imagine I, we, we had a discussion earlier with the request from the Weatherfield School District as far as the, the sidewalk. And I don't know if you recall, you know, if you've gone by and you've looked, but there's a definite appearance of a ditch there for a water runoff there, and I think that could prove to be quite expensive to negotiate a sidewalk there. I just don't know if that would. I think it would take a, quite a chunk of TIF funds to a sidewalk there. On that particular one.
There's not a lot of room to work with.
No, there's not a lot of room to work with, and plu- and also it's a state right-of-way. It's not even our right-of-way.
Yeah, I do, I do agree that it is a safety hazard.
They're, they're definitely, he, he, if you're walking on that side. Yeah, the superintendent definitely brought up some very good points there, and I, I don't disagree with them, but I just, I don't know. I think it's a tough call, but like I said, I think it would prove to be very expensive because of the terrain. And as well as it's, like I say, it's not our right-of-way. We'd have to work closely with the state on that. Highway.
Is that the only section that does not have sidewalk?
The section to the south or to the north of it doesn't have sidewalk either.
It doesn't? Okay.
It has one on the inside of the fence, but not on the outside.
That two blocks, there's, are the only two sections. Oh, no, anything south of McClure Street has no sidewalks.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think something like that would be as Madge suggested to me earlier that I tend to agree with. That would be something maybe better to partner with the school district. Safe routes to school program has uh their bid applications go out again, and I think it would really benefit our chances if we worked with the school district and the two of us lied together to, to get something like that. I just think it would take a too big of a chunk of our, our TIF funds to, to put the sidewalk in there.
When does that open up again? Will they do it every two years they're gonna do that?
I think that that cycle is for next year.
Yeah, next year?
I think this year was the ITEP cycle.
Opens August first through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Wasn't right in front of me. Starts opening up now, wow.
So i- is this a, I don't know, this is a question. Is this considered facilities, uh, that the school can use their one percent facilities tax on? Have we asked them that?
I haven't had a conversation with them myself, but.
I haven't asked. Um, they sent this to us last week and we put it on the agenda for you to talk about.
I just wonder what other options are out there.
I think with, what you just said, trust the schools.
I like that one, yeah, that's.
For August, I mean, literally right now. I think we start there. I think we try and use free money that's out there and try and get something that'll benefit us. Put it together in time with them.
I think just back to my personal feelings about TIF is that the TIF incremental tax for the TIF should again be spent towards in the next eleven years before we are before our TIF district expires. It needs to be used towards uh, you know, infrastructure in our blighted business district, which is most severely from Central to Third and Burr to Chestnut, you know? That's why I believe former councils pursued TIF. And, and, and again, we owe it to the other taxing bodies to do our best with that money to a- attack the areas that need the most infrastructure investment.
I would tend to agree, and I'd say that's why I feel this sidewalk would, would take up too much of the TIF funds. I think it would prove to be very expensive.
And we're not gonna get the return on investment.
No, we'll get no return on it.
So we're gonna spend a ton of money and not have any immediate account.
Basically, what we're saying is it doesn't meet the guidelines that we've set.
The precedent that we set forth. And I would encourage them to.
I, I think we would stand a much better chance if we partnered with the school in applying for this next grant.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Really excited about that, be- because then we could use funds that aren't from the TIF accounts.
Exactly.
Partner with them, we get a better chance of getting this.
That, that's my thoughts exactly on that, so.
Yeah, cuz there, there is very much a need there.
Maybe we can reach out to the school district and run that idea past them, see if they would be willing to partner with us and.
Sure they would in the meantime.
And that leaves us with one other aspect of the public sector with the uh Park District. Felt the hostage Taco Park. I have mixed feelings on this one. I just crazy about the idea, but I'm not a hundred percent against it.
I like the idea. I think it really needs done.
It definitely needs done.
But if we're gonna adhere to the standards that we set, it doesn't qualify.
As far as any return, it's not gonna give any return. It's basically, I don't know if they're gonna receive any more requests for usage, but it may, my opinion will maintain what they are currently using the.
I think another way to say it, if we would, if we were to spend TIF money on that, it would be immediate gratification rather than long-term improvement of the system. You know, we're gonna s- take money out of the account that's intended for investment and spend it on current non-revenue generating costs. That means the time value of those dollars are lost.
Set that precedent, so.
And I don't think the precedent's wrong.
It's not.
It, it's not wrong. I mean, It, it's not wrong, I mean-
We, we love the project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wrong part of money.
I mean, it's the same thing with the school, it's a very worthwhile project, but-
Start making exceptions for everything that comes up, then why would we?
Why do we just set a precedent, yeah?
That, uh, concludes our agenda with new business, so we will move along to council communications. Councilman Comnic?
I have one thing tonight, um, you know, with the holiday, the Labor Day holiday and hog days and whatnot in town. Um, just want everybody to have a safe, enjoyable weekend and get out and, uh, take advantage of some of the stuff that's out there.
You have some good entertainment lined up this year?
Yeah, we got great entertainment lined up, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and smaller acts through the pork chop tent, through the, the park and, um, downtown as well, so.
Are you still looking for volunteers for that pork chop tent?
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, we are still looking for volunteers. Um, yeah, so just reach out to us on Facebook, but yeah, we're looking for volunteers for pretty much anything, I don't think we've ever turned anybody away, so.
I, I know you, you've done a really good job in the last few years, you know, with the entertainment, so it's, you know, it's very appreciated.
Some entertainment this year, so.
That's all I got. Councilman Colomer?
I mean, I'll just, uh, second what Mike said, hog days is coming up, be safe, uh, out there, um, enjoy the weekend, the weather's gonna be absolutely wonderful, so, excited about that, um, but just make sure you're safe when you're out and about.
Same, same thing. No, just, uh, thank you to the volunteers that are out there, uh, thank you to the people that are prepping downtown, making things look nice, um, to the hog days committee and everybody that puts this on for us. This is truly a community event, and, uh, and it's part of our identity, so, uh, public participation is always appreciated. Um, goes with the value of the town, so, thank you.
We are the hog capital.
I only have one thing, uh, the city recer- re- received word last week that we were awarded another grant of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help with the replacement of lead service lines. So in the last few months, that's, uh, a million dollars that we've gotten, it still falls far short of the total amount that we need, but, uh, every little bit helps, and the entity awarding this grant will provide an official announcement once all the documents have been finalized, so I'm not at liberty to give any additional information other than that. And I believe that we do have, uh, some city announcements.
City hall and the transfer station will be closed on Monday, September first. All LRS services, service days will be postponed by one day next week, so no service on Monday. Mondays will be Tuesday, Tuesdays will be Wednesday, and so forth.
How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.